Okay, folks, we're going to call to honor this meeting of the Bridgeville City Council for September 14th, 2019. Glad to see you all here. We will now, if you would please, join us on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the people of Bridgeville, one nation, united, in the name of our God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will now hold the...
Mr. Abrams?
Here.
Mr. Fedge?
Here.
Mr. Zimmer?
Here.
Mr. Hein?
Here.
Mrs. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Purcell?
Aye.
Mr. Satell?
Aye.
Mr. Zimmer?
Aye.
Mrs. Abrams?
Aye.
By your vote of three ayes and four noes, you have refused to table the issue. Councilmember Zern?
Yes, item eight, number sixty-two eighteen, I'd like to ask you to... There's a red line copy of what was in your package to be replaced. David, the attorney, has gone over it and had some changes, and I'll let him speak if he'd like on this.
This is the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmer. And so, yes, you can, because that has not been introduced yet, you can just swap this in for the one that was in your package, and no motion to substitute is necessary at this point, and so then...
Set it out when it comes up.
Exactly. This will just get... The one that gets read would be the one that's on the table tonight, the red line.
It's only first reading.
Correct. That's correct.
So it'll just come up on the table anyway, and then...
Just read and table. Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay.
Councilmember Purcell?
Thank you again. As councilmember Grimmer is not here, just a preliminary note, I guess, or a form of order under M.5, bill number sixty-two fifteen. That bill is up for first consideration. Since Mr. Grimmer is not here, neither is the council president, since he's one of the same. If it's okay with the council, I will read that to introduce it for first reading.
Second. Motion's made in second to allow councilmember Purcell to do her first reading on bill sixty-two fifteen. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stating that motion carries. Further agenda items. Seeing none. Those in favor of the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stating motion carries. We're down to item E, the public portion of tonight's meeting. This is the opportunity for the public. We do have a public hearing, so those who want to stay at the public hearing, anyone who wants to reserve your comments for that, anyone who wish to address council tonight. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion and move on to approval of the minutes of the August 21st, 2019 meeting.
Second.
Motion's made in second for approval of the minutes of August 21st. Comments, questions, suggestions, comments? Seeing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stating motion carries. We're down to item G on announcements. I have none other than to note that councilmember Grimmer is not here. I also have no appointments. So, we're down to recessing for the public hearing as scheduled at the top of your agenda there on an M.3 district, Northwest Industrial Park, at thirteen-five-seventy-five St. Charles Road. We will now start the public hearing. Mr. Brightens?
Oh.
Tell us your name and everything.
Mr. Brightens? In one, two, three, five, five, half over Bridge Road, Bridgeville, Missouri, six, three, zero, four, four.
Very good. Proceed.
This is a request for a text amendment. It is a request for a text amendment to the M.3G Plant Manufacturing District. The M.3G district was created in nineteen eighty-six when this area rezoned. It is approximately seventy-five acres and consists of twenty-seven parcels. It is a portion of Northwest Industrial Park. All the streets in this industrial park are private. Currently, the M.3D district allows a variety of commercial and industrial uses, most of which are also permitted in the M.1 and M.2 districts. The existing uses in the district include a wide variety, office warehouses, contractors' offices, some application manufacturing operations. When this... When this item began, I met with Mr. Russ Smith. He's the applicant who works for Bridgeville Properties. The issue that they were having was that even though there's a pretty extensive list of permitted uses in this zoning district from when it was created, there are some that were just simply not added. The types of uses that we discussed are uses that you can find in even some of our B.2 and B.3 districts already permitted in the M.1 and M.2 districts, but they were simply not added back from when this district was created. So, some of the issues they've been having is that they've had to turn away certain potential tenants, leaving certain tenant spaces vacant. So, we discussed the idea of what specifically they wanted to include, so that's why the proposed additions are these six permitted uses. Physical functions, councils, your basic small fitness center, dry cleaning, food catering, professional medical clinic, business or trade schools. The review of the proposal, it is consistent with the council plan. The proposed uses are compatible both within this existing district as well as the surrounding area, and as stated before, these uses are already permitted in the surrounding M.1 and M.2 districts. And if approved, this would allow them to give open up some potential uses to keep some tenant spaces built. This went to the planning commission, August 12th. The planning commission did approve it by a vote of seven to zero.
Very good. Council on questions, Mr. Brightens?
I'm looking at the drawing and knowing what's coming up down the road for the landfill. About putting a train spur over there, would that be part of this property, and would it be allowed to do that? It just seems like, you have one of the pictures showing the trains, which is on the train right now. Is somewhere that going to cross right through here and get over to that R.1, which is the landfill?
So, I don't have the answer for all this evening. However, I don't think that that would impact this particular request, because this is just simply to add a few permitted uses that are currently allowed. So, anything related to eventual railroad spur would just be taken up by that time. I don't think this would have any impact.
Just looking, it looked like something we could be talking about. Thank you.
Very good. Further comments or questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Brightens. We have a representative of the petitioner here, Mr. Ben Freeman. Mr. Freeman, if you'd like to come vote. We have your addresses and everything, so you won't have to go through that procedure.
Okay, great. Mr. Dennis Freeman, Russ Smith, the owner of the property, was unfortunately not here this evening, and I'm in his place. I'm a commercial real estate broker, and I worked for us for several years on marketing these properties on Northwest Industrial. Part of what's brought us here tonight is we have a vacancy in these properties, in particular, a small three-thousand-square lot bay that is vacant and on the market for the past three years. We've identified an exercise facility that's an established entity, also in North County, looking to relocate. It's a CrossFit gym operated by two paramedics who do this on the side. They are well-established, and given the length of time we've had a vacant, we've approached the city desk for an expansion of the use. As Mr. Brightens has mentioned, all we're asking for is an expansion that's consistent with other uses in the area. This is a freestanding building, it's not adjacent to any residences. Quite frankly, the other properties it's really adjacent to are also owned by some of the same people, and I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have this evening.
Questions of Mr. Freeman from council. Seeing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the audience care to address this issue in support? In support of this proposed petition to amend the M.3 district? Any in opposition? In opposition to it? Seeing none. We'll close the public hearing and move on to the regular council meeting. Item K, emergency legislation, councilmember Grimmer... Or, I'm sorry, councilmember Abrams? On three, number five.
Yeah, it's me. Okay, move for first reading, uh, probably... That is, motion to approve, because this doesn't have two readings. A request for preliminary plan approval of a major residential subdivision, Fort McKay, to subdivide six-point-zero-three acres of land into twenty-four lots, a zone planned single-family residential unit development, PUD, located at thirty-one-seventy-Fifi Road, submitted by Pinnacle Land Development.
Second.
Motion's made in second to approve preliminary plan approval for the Fort McKay subdivision over on Fifi Road at thirty-one-seventy. Questions, comments from council?
This is, as it reads, a, you know, it's a preliminary plan approval for the subdivision on Fifi Road, the new one, and, um, down by Bridgecrest. So, it's exactly what it says, preliminary plan approval.
Okay. Councilmember Satell?
Yes, when we actually get the final copy of the preliminary plan, we'll then show the MSD easements. That'd be along, that we asked about, along, uh, Matthews Park.
I think this is the final package of the preliminary plan. Correct.
Mr. Brightens, would you care to address councilmember Satell's question?
So, preliminary plans don't require ordinance for approval, so it's simply by motion of council, because this is the only time that a building is part of you. The PUD rezoning was approved by council at the last council meeting, and I believe the applicant at that time addressed that, that they would, um, the appropriate... That would be addressed under the improvement plans. It wouldn't be something that would typically show up on a preliminary plan, nor would it be required to in the subdivision regulations. So, that'd be something that would be addressed through that process, and I believe, if I recall correctly, Mr. Gower, the applicant, stated that they would set aside the proper land for permanent future easements.
Side of the town around the area, they're dedicating for the sidewalk and the same thing, just to make sure it's also, you know, you know, added so that, you know, the citizens uphill from that can hook on later, you know, without having to tear up and try to pay for easements when it's already there or not. So, that can go back to...
It can be microphones.
Does that go back then to staff when it comes up?
Correct. Correct. There goes through staff to the improvement plans, so...
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Abrams?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, is my mic working? I, um, I just wanted to say that, yes, Mr. Satell had asked this question before, and I think it had been answered, and I am in support of this. I think it's going to be a nice addition to our residential area up there, so I am in favor of this.
Very good. Further comments or questions? Seeing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Stating motion carries. We've approved the preliminary plan approval for the Fort McKay subdivision. We are down to item L, number four. Councilmember Purcell, are you going to handle this one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Move for a second reading of bill number sixty-two fourteen.
This one's actually been read twice. It just needs to be put in ordinance.
This one's already been... This is for third and final reading, not second. We've already done the second.
Okay. I do apologize.
They don't hear it there.
It's just, just put into ordinance form.
At this time, I move the bill number sixty-two fourteen become ordinance nineteen-dash...
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Second. Motion's made in second for bill number sixty-two fourteen to become ordinance nineteen-dash-fifteen. Comments or questions from council? Councilmember Purcell?
I, I think this is something that the council needs to approve. I also think that if you listen back or recall councilmember Grimmer's comments from the last meeting, that, look, we're at a kind of a turning point here, right? We either do things here to help our residents and serve our community, or we vote against them, and we don't help the residents of our community, so I'll be supporting this.
Okay. Councilmember Zimmer?
Yeah, this is, uh, I think we ought to approve this too, but I think it should wait till we find where we're getting the money and the budget, and, uh, therefore, you know, I don't think the, uh, the residents should have to pay for a portion of it either. I'd rather wait to get the budget, money, and pay for the whole thing for the residents and get it done for you, but wait until then, so with that, I make a motion to call for the question.
Second. Motion's made in second to call a question. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Aye.
Roll call.
Mr. Hein?
Aye.
Mrs. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Purcell?
Aye.
Mr. Satell?
Aye.
Mr. Zimmer?
Aye.
Mrs. Abrams?
Aye.
Mr. Fedge?
For his end reason, is Mr. Zimmer aye?
Mr. Hein?
Aye.
By your vote of three to four, you have defeated the motion to change bill sixty-two fourteen into ordinance nineteen-dash-fifteen. Moving on. Consideration of new rules. Councilmember Purcell, item M.5.
Just one moment, I'll grab the sheet here. I move for first reading of bill number sixty-two fifteen.
Second. Motion's made in second for first reading of bill sixty-two fifteen. Councilmember Purcell?
Impervious of the mayor and the city council of the city of Bridgeville, Missouri, requesting the reappraisalment of the individuals as legally authorized, registered, and is for the purpose of serving as directors of the Nashville Bridge slash St. Charles Rock Road Community Improvement District, going to be directors. At this time, I move to table bill number sixty-two fifteen.
Second. Motion's made in second to table bill sixty-two fifteen. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Stating motion carries. Down to item M.6, councilmember Abrams.
Move for first reading of bill number sixty-two sixteen.
Second. Motion's made in second for first reading of bill sixty-two fifteen. Councilmember Purcell?
Impervious of the mayor and the city council of the city of Bridgeville, Missouri, amending chapter two oh five of the Bridgeville Code of Ordinances, appendix four dash two, Plant Manufacturing District, M.3G District, Northwest Industrial Park, one three five seven five St. Charles Rock Road, to allow additional permitted uses. Move to table.
Second.
Motion's made in second to table bill sixty-two sixteen. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Stating motion carries. We're down to item M.6, councilmember Abrams.
Move for first reading of bill number sixty-two seventeen.
This one's actually been read twice. It just needs to be put in ordinance.
This one's already been... This is for third and final reading, not second. We've already done the second.
Okay. I do apologize.
They don't hear it there.
It's just, just put into ordinance form.
At this time, I move the bill number sixty-two fourteen become ordinance nineteen-dash...
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Second. Motion's made in second for bill number sixty-two fourteen to become ordinance nineteen-dash-fifteen. Comments or questions from council? Councilmember Purcell?
I, I think this is something that the council needs to approve. I also think that if you listen back or recall councilmember Grimmer's comments from the last meeting, that, look, we're at a kind of a turning point here, right? We either do things here to help our residents and serve our community, or we vote against them, and we don't help the residents of our community, so I'll be supporting this.
Okay. Councilmember Zimmer?
Yeah, this is, uh, I think we ought to approve this too, but I think it should wait till we find where we're getting the money and the budget, and, uh, therefore, you know, I don't think the, uh, the residents should have to pay for a portion of it either. I'd rather wait to get the budget, money, and pay for the whole thing for the residents and get it done for you, but wait until then, so with that, I make a motion to call for the question.
Second. Motion's made in second to call a question. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Aye.
Roll call.
Mr. Hein?
Aye.
Mrs. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Purcell?
Aye.
Mr. Satell?
Aye.
Mr. Zimmer?
Aye.
Mrs. Abrams?
Aye.
Mr. Fedge?
For his end reason, is Mr. Zimmer aye?
Mr. Hein?
Aye.
By your vote of three to four, you have defeated the motion to change bill sixty-two fourteen into ordinance nineteen-dash-fifteen. Moving on. Consideration of new rules. Councilmember Purcell, item M.5.
Just one moment, I'll grab the sheet here. I move for first reading of bill number sixty-two fifteen.
Second. Motion's made in second for first reading of bill sixty-two fifteen. Councilmember Purcell?
Impervious of the mayor and the city council of the city of Bridgeville, Missouri, requesting the reappraisalment of the individuals as legally authorized, registered, and is for the purpose of serving as directors of the Nashville Bridge slash St. Charles Rock Road Community Improvement District, going to be directors. At this time, I move to table bill number sixty-two fifteen.
Second. Motion's made in second to table bill sixty-two fifteen. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Stating motion carries. Down to item M.6, councilmember Abrams.
Move for first reading of bill number sixty-two sixteen.
Second. Motion's made in second for first reading of bill sixty-two fifteen. Councilmember Purcell?
Impervious of the mayor and the city council of the city of Bridgeville, Missouri, requesting the reappraisalment of the individuals as legally authorized, registered, and is for the purpose of serving as directors of the Nashville Bridge slash St. Charles Rock Road Community Improvement District, going to be directors. At this time, I move to table bill number sixty-two fifteen.
Second. Motion's made in second to table bill sixty-two fifteen. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Stating motion carries. We're down to item M.6, councilmember Abrams.
Move for first reading of bill number sixty-two sixteen.
Second.
Motion's made in second for first reading of bill sixty-two sixteen. A petition to amend the M.3 district, Northwest Industrial Park, at thirteen-seven-sixty-five St. Charles Rock Road. Councilman Abrams?
In arreting to the city council of the city of Bridgeville, Missouri, amending chapter two oh five of the Bridgeville Code of Ordinances to create exceptions to drug-related offenses per lawful activities relating to the cultivation, manufacture, dispensing, sale, possession, and consumption of marijuana for medical use in accordance with applicable state laws. Move to table.
Second.
Motion's made in second to table bill sixty-two seventeen. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Stating motion carries. We're down to item M.6, councilmember Abrams.
In arreting to the city council of the city of Bridgeville, Missouri, amending chapter two oh five of the Bridgeville Code of Ordinances to create exceptions to drug-related offenses per lawful activities relating to the cultivation, manufacture, dispensing, sale, possession, and consumption of marijuana for medical use in accordance with applicable state laws. Move to table.
Second.
Motion's made in second to table bill sixty-two seventeen. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Cannot ask questions, councilmember Hein. Not on the table.
It's got the wrong date on it.
What?
The first reading has the wrong date on it.
Yeah, today, September.
September fourth.
Yeah. It's in the bill. The bill itself is mistaken, so that needs to be amended when it comes back up at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, councilmember Hein.
Okay.
By your vote, you have tabled bill sixty-two seventeen. You can take the vote. Okay. Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes, I'd like to move for the first reading of bill number sixty-two eighteen.
Second. Motion's made in second for first reading of bill sixty-two eighteen. Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes, in ordinance amending chapter five-ten in the municipal code by the addition of the new section regulating the parking and placement of storage trailers, portable on-demand storage device units, pods, dumpsters, including soft-sided dumpsters or bagsters and other similar devices. Move to table.
Second. Motion's made in second to table bill sixty-two eighteen. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Stating motion carries. We are down to discussion items on the Coldwater Creek taxing subdivision. This is an issue that we raised at the last meeting. We did send out, hopefully everybody got their copy of that, but sent out. Did everybody get theirs on the material that MSD had put forward about reactivating the Coldwater Creek subdivision? Everybody get theirs?
Yes.
Did you get all your information on this one?
I didn't.
You're going to pack it out, email it.
Nope. I didn't get nothing in the email. Oh, emailed, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's I did.
Yeah, I have everything.
Okay. We'll start discussion. Councilmember Zimmer?
Yeah, I had, uh, I did a few things. I went and talked to some people, and I put this on Facebook as well, and got comments back, and it was pretty much everybody that heard about it did not want it. It was pretty much no more taxes. Almost the same words from each person, so that's, that's the information I have, and I pretty much feel the same way, no more taxes, so you have my, my opinion and the people that I talked to on it, so...
Councilmember Satell?
Uh, yes, kind of like Diddaway just said, but in addition, reading on one of the pages here, it said that the citizens voted to roll all of her back to zero countywide, and see, why would also the one pop up as a loophole coming back? I'm thinking this is...
Citizens didn't vote to roll it back. They don't vote on rolling back taxes, councilmember.
Well, it's a change in it. There was something in the printing that came from this...
I think you've got a misunderstanding of it, councilmember. There is no vote when you roll back your taxes by MSD. There wasn't a public vote. It was a vote by their board of trustees.
Okay. Maybe that was the vote.
That was the vote.
Seems like this is, not that it's a bad idea, I just don't like how it's being distributed. I mean, they're taxing on basically real estate value. They charge so much, a little bit per ten thousand square feet, and everybody had to pay. I was trying to figure out, does the airport that St. Louis owns, are they going to contribute? They're right smack in the middle with probably the biggest donation to this creek thing.
What you're referring to was defeated by the voters back in twenty-eighteen November, when they tried to pass it as an impervious tariff, which would be based on the square footage of property that's made impervious to rainfall coming through.
We've seen some high-volume rainfall lately, and...
Correct.
Certain amount, only the first two tenths to half-inch is going to soak in. When you get these three-and-a-half-inch rains, you could have an empty total, you know, farm field, or the off-site areas that are runways just grass, and it's not absorbing, you know, or any person's lots, and I just think it's being taxed in the wrong manner just because you've got an expensive building somewhere, and I don't happen to live in this district. I'm just south of it, okay? So, they're talking to people, and the fairest way is that everybody paid the same amount per acre. I mean, if you only got a quarter-acre lot, and you're going to only spend whatever the square footage comes out to, but it should be broke down for how many, by the acres you own, whether it's hard surface, or whether it's turf, or whether it's soil.
So, in your scenario, councilmember, one acre, if the entire acre was covered by asphalt, you'd be charging the same as an individual that had one acre that was just grass. That's your scenario.
That, that's kind of my scenario, because, you know...
Even though you understand that an acre that's covered by asphalt or any other impervious surface is going to generate a lot more runoff than an acre that has grass, where the water actually permeates through your soil.
But when you look and compare like a twelve-story building in Office Plaza, you don't sit there and add it twelve times, you get just once, and yet, the appraised value is really high, okay, based on a structure like that. I'm just using that as a structure and example, instead of taxing it based on the improvement values of property, you know, which doesn't change the amount you pay, yet, based on land, you know, and when you get these big heavy rains, that's the problem. It's not the slow amount that soaks into the ground, it's the big heavy ones that run off, that's even, you know, the saturated soils, okay? And I know we both ran into water, you know, penetration in our previous career, so I just think it needs to be a fairer way, and even if the citizens in this whole district, it should go back to votes, because it was passed back in the fifties, you know, you know, there's probably hardly anybody that voted for this even still alive.
This one wasn't voted in the fifties, it was more like the sixties and seventies is when Coldwater Creek came into existence.
When they put in eight or ten cents. Now, if the last use had eight cents, but I'm reading the information, it says ten when it came to...
Ten was the authorized, but they, because property values have gone up, they're only legally can charge eight cents right now.
Okay. If they so choose to.
...relating to the cultivation, manufacture, dispensing, sale, possession, and consumption of marijuana for medical use in accordance with applicable state laws. Move to table.
Second.
Motion's made second at table Bill sixty-two seventeen. Those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Cannot ask questions, Councilmember Heim, not on the table.
It's got the wrong date on it.
What?
The first reading has the wrong date on it.
Yeah, today, September fourth.
September fourth.
Yes. It's in the bill. The bill itself is mistaken. So that needs to be amended when it comes back up at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Heim. By your vote, you have tabled Bill sixty-two seventeen. You can take the vote. Councilmember Zimmer, item eight now.
Yes, I'd like to move for the first reading of Bill number sixty-two eighteen.
Second.
Motion's made second for first reading of Bill sixty-two eighteen. Councilmember Zimmer.
Yes, in order to amend Chapter five-ten of the municipal code by addition of the new section regulating the parking and placement of storage trailers, portable on-demand storage device units, pods, dumpsters, including soft-sided dumpsters or bagsters and other similar devices. Move to table.
Second.
Motion's made second at table Bill sixty-two eighteen. Those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post standing. Motion carries. We are down to discussion items on the Coldwater Creek taxing subdistrict. This is an issue that we raised at last meeting. We did send out, hopefully everybody got their copy of that. Sent out. Did everybody get theirs? On the material that MSD had put forward about reactivating the Coldwater Creek subdistrict. Everybody get theirs?
Yes.
For me?
Did you get all your information on this one?
I didn't.
You're gonna pack it out email.
Nope, I didn't get nothing in the email. Oh, emailed, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's I did.
Yeah, I have everything, I know.
Okay. We'll start discussion. Councilmember Zimmer.
Yeah, I had, I did a few things. I went and talked to some people and I put this on Facebook as well and got comments back and it was pretty much everybody that heard about it did not want it. It was pretty much no more taxes. Almost the same words from each person. So that's, that's the information I have and I pretty much feel the same way, no more taxes. So you have my, my opinion and the people that I talked to on it, so.
Councilmember Satell.
Uh, yes, kinda like Diddaway just said, but in addition, reading on one of the pages here said that the citizens voted to roll all of our back to zero countywide. And see, why would also the one pop up as a loophole coming back?
Citizens didn't vote to roll it back. They don't vote on rolling back taxes, Councilmember.
Well, it's changing it. There was something in the printing of, that came from this MSD.
I think you've got a misunderstanding of it, Councilmember. There is no vote when you roll back your taxes by MSD. There wasn't a public vote. It was a vote by their board of trustees.
Okay, maybe that was the vote.
That was the vote.
Seems like this is, not that it's a bad idea, I just don't like how it's being distributed. I mean, they're taxing on basically real estate value. They charge so much, a little bit per ten thousand square feet and everybody had to pay. I was trying to figure out, does the airport that St. Louis owns, are they gonna contribute? They're right smack in the middle with probably the biggest donation to this creek thing.
What you're referring to was defeated by the voters back in twenty-eighteen November when they tried to pass it as an impervious charter, which would be based on the square footage of property that's made impervious to rainfall coming through.
We've seen some high-volume rainfall lately and...
Correct.
Certain amount, only the first two tenths to half-inch is gonna soak in. When you get these three-and-a-half-inch rains, you could have an empty total, you know, farm field or the off-site areas that are runways just grass and it's not absorbing, you know, or any person's lots. And I just think it's being taxed in the wrong manner just because you've got an expensive building somewhere. And I don't happen to live in this district, I'm just south of it, okay? So, so talking to people, the fairest way is that everybody pay the same amount per acre. I mean, if you only got a quarter acre lot and you're gonna only pay, you're gonna spend whatever the square footage comes out to. But it should be broke down for how many, by the acres you own, whether it's hard surface or whether it's turf or whether it's soil.
So in your scenario, Councilmember, one acre, if the entire acre was covered by asphalt, you'd be charging the same as an individual that had one acre that was just grass. That's your scenario.
That, that's kinda my scenario because, you know...
Even though you understand that an acre that's covered by asphalt or any other impervious surface is gonna generate a lot more runoff than an acre that has grass where the water actually permeates through your soil.
But when you look and compare like a twelve-story building in Offspring Plaza, you don't sit there and add it twelve times, you add just once and yet the appraised value is really high, okay, based on a structure like that. I'm just using that as a structure and example, instead of taxing it based on the improvement values of property, you know, which doesn't change the amount you pay, yet based on land, you know, and when you get these big heavy rains, that's the problem. It's not the slow amount that soaks into the ground, it's the big heavy ones that runoff, that's even, you know, the saturated soils, okay? And I know we both related into water, you know, penetration in our previous career, so I, I just think it needs to be a fairer way. And even if the citizens in this whole district, it should go back to votes because it was passed back in the fifties, you know, you know, there's probably hardly anybody that voted for this even still alive.
This one wasn't voted in the fifties, it was more like the sixties and seventies is when Coldwater Creek came into existence.
When they put in eight or ten cents. Now, if the last use that eight cents, but I'm reading the information, says ten when it came to act.
Ten was unauthorized, but they, because property values have gone up, then they're only legally can charge eight cents right now.
Okay, if they so choose to. Anyway, I follow what Scott said, for our citizens, I would prefer to be go no against this for our city right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Fett.
Uh, Mayor, is this just to be used on stormwater?
That's correct.
Okay, now, also, do you know, is this Project Clear still something that's gonna be brought up by MSD between now, I mean, I know I, I went to the meeting where there was a, they want a rate hike from the commission for the years of twenty up to twenty-four. And I thought, I know that this has been a subject that was discussed at the municipal meetings. And there's quite an increase gonna be in it. The way I read it and think about it, correct me if I'm wrong, is it's gonna be a vote of the people, but if you deny it, they're gonna go after cash. I mean, that's what I read.
For Project Clear, you're kinda confusing. Project Clear deals with sanitary wastewater, so that's the sewage.
Yeah.
That's what it deals with. The courts have ruled that the charges that MSD has are user fees, they're not subject to a public vote.
Oh, they're not?
Not user fees. But what it would be subject to vote is if MSD wants to take its proposal to bond.
Okay.
Bonding has to be approved by a public vote.
Yes, sir, well, this, this piece of literature here says with bonding financing and then it says without bonding finances.
That's correct.
And the rate's gonna be much higher without bonding, so if it's gonna be brought out for a vote, it's gonna be like buy what we're giving you or it's gonna cost you more if you voted down.
It'll cost you a lot.
So, whereas the last two years, it's gonna cost you a lot more.
Yeah, it costs you a lot. It's very similar, I always use the analogy with bonding, like a house mortgage.
Yeah, okay.
Some of us who have a lot of cash come forward to just outlay, determine us not cash, buy a house outright. Most of us have to go through the mortgage process where we space payments over a twenty, thirty-year period. In the long run, if you had the cash to buy it upfront, you save money because you don't pay the interest and principal cost as much.
Yes, sir, I understand.
That, that's the same principle as what MSD is trying to sell.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Purcell.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three points on the subject. Uh, the first point is from Councilmember Remus, he is absent this evening. He emailed me, has a very, very short message for me to convey. He says, quote, "The only way I see the effect of residential residents driving in return value for the taxes that they will be paying would be under option two, the administration's split." The second point that I have is, I don't see any benefit to saying, yes, let's really go for this. Because let's assume we do and let's assume we get some money from it. We're not gonna vote and have any projects done. This council just voted down a project for stormwater that could have been done. Councilmembers said, well, we need to see where the money is coming from. Well, why didn't we table the last piece of legislation so we could find out where the money is coming from? That's beside the point. However, I don't think that money is what is in the way. Some people that support this would say, well, we'll have the money so that we can then do the projects. Well, I think that's wrong because if you look at the last application, the applicant was gonna put in almost fifteen thousand dollars. So it's not money that's an issue for this council, it's the fact that they don't wanna do these projects. We have a book sitting in the back office from two thousand with tons of stormwater projects that could be done, but we're not gonna do it. So why tax our residents and collect their hard-earned money if we're not gonna do anything with it or send it to the parks departments? No offense to the parks department, you guys do a great job, but I'm pretty upset about the money that goes to you guys and doesn't go to stormwater projects. The third point that I have to make is, I, just like a previous council member stated, I've talked to several residents about this as well. And the notion that I'm getting back is, wait a second, didn't we just have an election about increasing taxes? And I took a moment and explained, we're not increasing, we're giving you an old tax. This is an old tax that was on the books, but they just wanna kinda start charging for it now. They haven't been doing it for a while. And the voters couldn't believe it. They feel like that's a technicality, they feel like that this would be subverting the will of the voters, even if there is a bond issue or some technical thing, they're just reintroducing an old tax. So the feeling I'm getting from our residents is they do not want this. So, thank you.
Very good. Further comments? Okay, we kinda get a mix bag here, so let me explain once again through how this process works with MSD. They deactivated the collection of the tax, but it did not deactivate or lose their authority to charge the tax. The tax revenues under Plan Two, as Councilmember Grimmer, as expressed by Councilmember Purcell said, they would share one-half of all the revenues that are generated in the city of Bridgeton. Councilmember Purcell had asked, well, what exactly might that be in terms of the individual home? So if you had a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, your tax on eight cents would be at about forty dollars a year, about three dollars and thirty-three cents a month, that's what you would pay under this. Because under the tax laws of the state of Missouri, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home is assessed at one-third of its actual value, so it'd be fifty thousand. And then taxes are calculated on every one hundred dollars of assessed value. So if you have fifty, then you divide that out by a hundred, so you come down to about fifty or five hundred, and then times that by the eight cents, that's where you get forty dollars a year. So that's the way it works. So you may ask also about businesses, it just depends on the individual value of that business. I just used a hundred and fifty because to me, that's, a lot of homes in Bridgeton around that range. Some less, some more. Councilmember Grimmer, or, I'm sorry, Councilmember Norris.
Yes, I just want a clarification, that would only be in the area that would be Coldwater Creek representation, it would not be the whole Bridgeton.
No, it would only be in the area of Coldwater Creek that drains to that basin.
Okay, so...
So like where you live, it's not Coldwater Creek.
Right, so it'd be approximately Ward One.
Most, yeah, almost all Ward One would be in it.
All right, thank you.
Except for the areas as you head west. Councilmember Heim.
I just wanted to clarify, I, I took it that Councilman Purcell thought that the money from this project, I mean, from this tax could be used for the Bridgeport place? No, okay, this one, okay, thank you.
Yeah. The other thing to keep in mind here is that there are roughly around fifteen municipalities in Coldwater Creek subdistrict. The way it is written by MSD's charter, which is a constitutionally-replied charter, is that the majority of property owners get to decide. So the biggest municipality in this Coldwater Creek subdistrict is Florissant. So if Florissant, and let's say Hayeswood agreed to do it, that's better than fifty percent of the property within this subdistrict. They still need to go forward with it and it collects in the entire subdistrict. So in other words, even if we as the council say, no, we don't think you ought to reactivate it, if the other municipalities within Coldwater Creek say, no, we think it's a good idea and we are, then MSD can do it if they want to. And our residents pay the tax regardless. They can exempt out of the tax. Does everybody understand now? Mm-hmm? So... The impression, Councilmember Satell.
Yes, uh, looking at the map, this does show, most of us know the streets that's gonna be included, it's, you know, the older area of Fifi, Raymond, Biffy, Alva Banks Road, uh, things like that. It's basically some of our lower-end priced homes, so we're actually throwing a tax out there that's gonna be hurting probably the, the least that it can afford it. And I, that's why, another reason why I don't think it's, we don't have to say, like you said, it's gonna be Florissant, Hayeswood making this decision. But I think as a, as a council, this is something that we unanimously should be voting against because, first of all, we don't even have anything listed of any projects. They had a list on there of the projects that they're forecasting, there was none of them listed in this, in Bridgeton at all. So basically because we've taken care of a lot of them, okay? We have that stormwater, rainwater garden right there, weekends only. Yeah, that could have been fixed under that. Maybe there's some maintenance to that every year that we could maybe throw the maintenance on that. Maybe you could let us know how much we paid, because I know, early in the spring, I saw that we have Bridgeton employees out there cleaning that.
That's correct.
So that might be one piece, we could say, okay, yeah, we can get a little bit of return on that investment. So if you can explain some of those, you might be able to persuade us to say, okay, yes, we, there is a few dollars we can gain back, but I don't think we're gonna get forty of the eighty thousand dollars back and be able to spend per year on this.
I don't know, I think you could, if you look at over there on Long Road, Long Road doesn't have storm sewers along the road.
That was the one that Scott and I talked about.
Open ditches. Normally in a city, you would prefer not to have open ditches, you would prefer to have a storm sewer that's enclosed and then carry the water down. Because in this particular case of Long Road, you're gonna carry water down toward Lindberg and, and I-7, which then is in the Coldwater Creek subdistrict. The issue there is forty thousand dollars, or the exact amount would be forty-seven if they approved the double. That would pay maybe one-tenth of what the cost would be to put in storm sewers there. Storm sewers are pretty expensive, it's not deep. Maybe it's two hundred thousand, so it's five times that amount. You wouldn't collect enough money to do the project in one year. So I would debate, and you say, you know, sometimes you're gonna have to collect the money. The other thing with this is, is, I'm trying to remember, we did some work over there on Banks Road, as you recall in your district, that may have been, do all of them now have curb and guttering?
Correct.
We already did that. So that would have been a project that we could have funded because this would also allow the city, or any city within Coldwater Creek, to do curb and guttering on its streets, which then helps to maintain the street's value, its stability, and its structural integrity.
So a viewpoint like long, you could actually compound and save the money over a couple of years to do a project, or you have to spend it all in the same year?
No, you could compound it, you could hold it in reserve.
I mean, that's one project.
Yeah, that's one project.
Talking about just overland a couple of years ago just to get by instead of redoing it.
Correct.
You know, so if we can, you know, if we look at it ways, because it's probably gonna pass with a lot of our positive votes, okay? But I think for the benefit of our Bridgeton citizens that live in this particular area, we, we should be stepping up and saying, no, we really don't need that extra tax on that, you know, for, for that amount. But because we're probably gonna lose to the other cities' votes, it'd be nice if we had a choice to say, I'd at least like the fifty-fifty split like, like Drew talked about, okay? Did...
Well, you've already said you don't want it.
I don't want it at all.
You don't want the fifty-fifty. Well, that's what you're telling me.
You're gonna, you're gonna tax it all, at least that's what we're gonna do.
Councilmember Satell, you don't want the fifty-fifty because you don't want the tax period. That's what you said.
Correct. I don't think they should be charged at all.
Fifty-fifty's on the deal, it's, it's off the table as well. You've lost everything, you, you know, if it doesn't go. If MSD doesn't, you know, it would be their choice to do it and implement throughout that district. We would still benefit if they go by the second choice, regardless of what we do as a council here.
Right.
Councilmember A.
Yes, sir. Do we know approximately, um, how much it would cost the residents per year?
It would roughly cost at a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, it would be about forty dollars.
Forty dollars. Well, you know, I, maybe it wasn't explained to the residents as well as the mayor just explained, and maybe it was just, you know, we're gonna have a tax on it, it would pass us. So maybe if it was explained better, um, like he explained it, they may, you know, be pardoned. So, um, we're probably gonna, they're probably gonna end up paying part anyway. It's the way I look at it. That's all.
We can say... Councilmember Norris.
Well, I just wanted to comment, I said Coldwater Creek, I said, you know, for the repair, you've heard of Coldwater Creek in the news in many areas, and if you see some of the erosion that is happening in the North County area, and of course, that water will continue down, so if they fix it up above us, it could also improve our Coldwater Creek area. So, um, I think we help our neighbors, we help ourselves.
Councilmember Fett.
Uh, yes, Mayor, you said that, uh, if Florissant's part, it's gonna go into everybody.
Well, it takes one that just lost, but a couple cities.
Yeah, but, so bottom line is, I've heard a lot of discussion that our residents aren't too in favor of it to live over there. So I'd like to just move, what would you like us to do? Make a motion to join our, maybe a positive motion to join and then vote that down, or how would you like to handle it?
I guess we can do it as a motion, whether or not we approve or disapprove.
Or do you just wanna go down and ask each of us our opinion? Well, what do you...
We can do it either way because we were doing it as a vote call.
Okay, well, I want to just kinda move the question, so...
Okay.
Uh, if that's favorable, I move that we participate in, uh, in the funding of it. And the people can...
Okay, so Councilmember Fett's motion is to reestablish the...
Yeah, to reestablish it.
Okay.
And then we can vote it down if you're against it, we'll vote, because I'm against it basically, but...
You're just doing a next round of process.
Yeah, to get the thing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made second to encourage MSD's board of trustees to reestablish the tax that once was collected within the Coldwater Creek subdistrict. Is that an accurate reflection for everybody?
Right.
All right. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Purcell?
Nay.
Mr. Satell?
Nay.
Mr. Summer?
Aye.
Mrs. Abrams?
Aye.
Mr. Fett?
Nay.
Mr. Heim?
Nay.
Mrs. Norris?
Aye.
Okay, I will advise MSD that the city of Bridgeton does not care to reenact the tax. Moving on. Okay, we're down to reports. City Attorney?
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Very good. Councilmembers, Councilmember Zimmer.
Uh, yes, two things. Design and review yesterday, we had Davidson, the district came in, they asked for a very house. They have a large sign on the side of their building now that says help wanted, if you get a chance, drive down and look at it because they, they wanna, they want that approved, so, um, just to, like you know, so you can take a look at it ahead of time. The, the design and review, I think it was six to one voted for letting them have it for a period of time, and then they'll paint over it, so, um, okay. Next thing, stormwaters and parks tax, I'd just like to, I'd just like to make a point because I didn't say anything last, last meeting, but I'd like to say at this meeting, I disagree with some of the, what was said, for the last six years, I have pressed to get some of the budget to where we use, use it for stormwaters. And it's, I have definitely said something every year at budget time and in-between times talking to various people here. I just wanna make it very clear, you know, I voted for the stormwater, I didn't vote as much for the tax that I did for the stormwater. I want the stormwater there to help the people. It's not that I'm trying to keep these people from having what they, they want, they'll, they'll eventually get what they want. Maybe another six months, I'm sure they'll get it. But I'd like to, you know, I'd like to use it to help those people, but I just wanna make it clear that every year I have it, it didn't seem like it this year, it was because, you know, it's like beating a dead horse. I know some other people have mentioned it too, but it always went to the parks and it shouldn't go all to the parks. It should be divided up in some way, I'm not saying how it should be divided up, but there should be some money going to stormwater. It's wrong not to have money in the stormwater fund to help people like, like us that need help, so, that's all I have, thanks.
Very good. Councilmember Norris.
Oh, thank you. Uh, I just wanted, I attended the Police Business Watch, uh, it was a very interesting presentation from the Pattonville Assistant Principal, John Fitzgerald. They have a new program, or they're working with a program called Career Technical Initiatives. We're just very fortunate to have such a school district with such future plans, always ahead of the game for our students. And then I just have a question to Robert or to someone, um, who, who takes care of the green algae in that detention pond, I guess, in front of Chapulti? That doesn't look so great right there on our, so I know that's not ours, if that's part of the, who's responsibility, I would like to see if you could take care of that or tell somebody to scoop it out. Um, and then I just wanna make an announcement, we are moving to Ward Four meeting, will be held at the City Hall on Wednesday, October ninth, in the multiple purpose room. Sorry. And then looking forward to the Missouri Municipal League Convention next week, see you there.
Very good. Councilmember Satell.
Uh, yes, sir, did what Jody just said about the Business Watch, I was really glad to see that they praise so much about the Pattonville schools and the learning process, you know, kind of was, you know, not upset, but kind of honored when he all of a sudden, he brings up my own son as far, being part of in charge up there, Jonathan, so, you know, that was really nice, and, you know, the compliments, the keep in mind on, on the teachers that are actually there and helping out. I mean, he, he only wants to teach at that school, his whole career, I mean, he waited to not go somewhere else because he's, he's seen Pattonville nothing under where else, so I'm kinda tickled, they're appreciating his efforts on that. Uh, I also noticed when I came back home this morning, I mentioned to Robert earlier, I was tickled to see that they're working on the natural bridge sidewalk up here, they had it surveyed, now that he has all this, this killer of tractors digging out the dirt, put some gravel down, so maybe by this next Fourth of July, we'll have a new sidewalk over there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember A.
Actually, I'm not gonna say anything because I may say something that I might be sorry about later, so...
Very good. Councilmember Purcell.
Thank you, Mayor. First, just wanna start by thanking everybody for coming out tonight, and I really appreciate y'all showing up. As you can probably tell, we don't get a ton of people to show up to these things, and so I really appreciate that we did come out and take an interest in your local government. Next, I'd like to thank the city, next week, myself and some of the council members will be attending Missouri Municipal League Conference, it's actually gonna be taking place here in St. Charles, in St. Charles Convention Center. I'd just like to thank the mayor, administration, and everybody who made that possible for me to attend. Third, as we all know, I'm assistant coach for the Pattonville bowling team, we've started up our practices again for this year, our first competition is coming up on September twenty-ninth, we compete on Sundays. And this year, we're trying to give them jerseys, as part of that, we're doing fundraising effort next Wednesday, I know that's September eleventh, but next Wednesday from four to eleven at the Cane Raising Cane's Chicken, and again, I know that's insane, and, but if you're out there, if you could go there next week, we've got some flyers, just tell them you're here to support the bowling club, we get fifteen percent of your meal purchase, we really appreciate it. Uh, next, I again, did those comments of Monica Council from Ward One, I'm glad to see that sidewalk there on Natural Bridge starting to take effect.
to see that sidewalk there on Natural Bridge starting to take effect, almost every day that I pull out of my condominium there, on Natural Bridge, I see people there on the side of the street, because there's no sidewalk, so I'm really happy for this, I think it's really gonna benefit our residents, and it'll be more, it'll be safer. The last thing is, uh, since, you know, council members in are voted up, I wanna make a comment about the stormwater also, I will keep a brief, um, but, I, I find it appalling that council members will say that they want to help people, and they want to vote for the stormwater, but then when the time came up to sit in this chair and make a decision, they voted against helping people. I mean, that's just appalling, and then after the vote to say, well, I really wanted it, if you really wanted it, vote for it. And you know what, if you have questions about maybe where the money's coming from, oh, you ask those questions before the vote, there are plenty of people here in the administration who'd be happy to answer those questions and tell you where the money was coming from. And, here's the last thing, and I said this before, I would say it one more time, if you wanted more time to have your questions answered, why did you vote against table minutes? It, it, it's, it's money below you, do not vote against it and sit here and tell me that you're, you're trying to help our residents or you want it, that's ridiculous. Thanks, have a great night, or by the way, I'd say a comment.
Councilmember Hahn?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you constituents for being here, and the ones that are left, and, um, so, the plant giveaway, sponsored by the Beautification Commission, is, uh, September fourteenth, Saturday, nine AM, up at the outdoor pool. Um, I too, um, I attended the DePaul Grand Opening, or reopening of the Critical Care Unit, I was there at five o'clock, but I missed several of you that were there, uh, it's beautiful, um, state-of-the-art Critical Care Unit. Um, I had a question about, well, the boards and commissions dinner, it seems like council used to have some input into it, as when, the date, we used to pick the date, we had choices of dates, and day of the week, and then we also used to pick, um, what the menu was, either beef or chicken, I believe, but, anyway, I just wanna make that comment, I don't think we were asked-
Yeah, we were.
-for any input this year.
We was, because we remembered the mayor said he had a, uh, that Friday night, he had a wedding?
This coming?
No.
Okay. All right, and then, I was talking to a constituent a couple of weeks ago, and we had a, a discussion on the rec center and the fees. He's a senior, I believe, he pays a hundred and ten dollars a year, he says, I don't know how we do it, he goes, uh, you can go to Edward Jones, of course, um, theirs is probably more, uh, Maryland Heights is probably more, he goes, you can get a membership at, you know, like Gold's Gym, or some of these other club fitness, for ten dollars a month, however, they don't have the amenities that our rec center has. So, we discussed a while, I said, well, what would you be willing to pay? He goes, well, I think double that would be fine, I'd be happy with paying two hundred and twenty dollars, so, I think that's something maybe we need to take a look at, is our, our fees for admission and annual passes. Thank you.
Councilmember Fedge?
I have nothing, sir.
Very good. We'll do department reports, chief?
Okay. Relative to the incident last night that we, got a little coverage on the news, the, the information that we have out there now is incomplete, I don't have any additional information I can share, I will tell you that we didn't get through the first, second, or third time, and, uh, we were working through this, there's a lot more of this story than meets the eye, and, as the minute I have something concrete that I can share, I will certainly do that. Good news is, on Saturday night, we talked to, going through cars in Cypress Village, so, we are willing to lay that issue. And then, I will be returning to training tomorrow morning, and I will be back in town on Friday.
Very good. Brennan?
So, our department is turning the page from some summer programs to fall, um, and with that, the outdoor pool will be closed, or it has already closed this past weekend, and the last event, there will be the Dog Slim, and that's this Saturday from one to three, it's ten dollars, uh, that's dog and human, uh, if you pre-register to the rec center on thirteen, you show up at the door, that'd be this Saturday, so, it should be daytime. And we've also rolled out our Fit for Fall campaign, and the goal of that is to kinda help people continue their health goals from summer, I mean, almost a little bit of the shirt off and get to the pool into the fall, so, um, that's the goal, we have a lot clinics, blood pressure springs, wine and yoga class, um, and we reached two hundred and forty-five people last year, we hope to surpass that this year, and just, uh, kind of on the fee increases, as Councilmember Hahn mentioned, we will be looking into that, especially with the minimum wage increase that is upon us in the coming years, so that's definitely something that, that we'll be looking into.
Very good. Councilmember Purcell, did you have a question on parks?
I do. Just curious, I know a lot of places do, why didn't you close the pool at, at the beginning of September, I mean, it was a warm one out there today, I mean, I guess we could get a free snowstorm or something like that, but, is it because most of our part-time help is, you know, going back to college or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, of course, it's pretty pretty standard across the board, I mean, you know, pull the pool, or Memorial Day to Labor Day, and, uh, yeah, that's, I mean, the main reason is, because most of your staff is in high school or college, and all go at that point.
Gotcha, thank you.
Mr. Gunn?
It's towards that green algae that are in those pension basins, um, developers or the project managers, they use a product called Aqua Shade, and that kind of eliminates any of the algae that's just being formed, the sunlight can get in there and cause the algae to corrode. And we've had three major wind events over the last couple of months that definitely washed away a lot of that product in this matter of the applying, and it is very expensive, the buy coming down, we put it in the trees on the acres. Uh, we ran out this year, we had two hundred-year wind events, and one five-hundred-year wind event, that was on July twenty-second, so, doesn't surprise me, there you see these pension basins, there, there'll be algae that we're really relying on product, Aqua Shade, to keep that, that algae down, so we'll, we'll ask them to apply some more, but it is almost a fall which is good.
Okay, it just looks sticky.
But again, remember, that's the property owners' responsibility.
Correct. It's not the cities. No, we're siding for property owners, but the same, I, we're really close to the fall around, that's when you stop using it. As far as the sidewalk in Natural Bridge, we have started it, we're looking at probably two, three weeks, weather's pending, um, we're gonna work on that till then.
Very good. Mr. Bookout?
I have nothing.
Very good. I also attended this morning's Business Watch, I was mentioning to the chief, you know, attendance has been a little lacking on that, we're gonna have to work with ways in which to increase it, uh, maybe even a member will come up with the topic, I don't know if it's the topic, time of the day, or what it is, but we'll be working to improve our attendance though.